November sixteenth, Commissioner meeting at this time, if you'll please stand, Commissioner Pete Myers is going to lead us in a prayer and Commissioner Williams with the pledge.
Bow your heads, please. Our Heavenly Father, we'd like to start off with thanking you for another beautiful day in southeastern North Carolina. We'd also like to take this opportunity to thank you for the many gifts and blessings you bestowed upon us as a state and United States as a country. Now, as we move through the agenda today, please allow us to focus and give us the wisdom to make good sound decisions. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Any veterans or law enforcement in the room or active military, please stand and be recognized. Thank you, folks. All right. Mr. Turney, did you get the list from outside?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do we have any signups?
Not for...
We're not there yet, I'm just...okay. We're getting ready to move into the public hearings, I didn't know if you had any signups.
For one of the public hearings, five point two.
All right. But before we get there, we're going to, we don't have any additions or anything to remove from the agenda, correct? Okay, so we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor. Vote is unanimous. Thank you, folks. We're going to move on into the public hearing, first one being item five point one, public hearing resolution approving grant application fifty-three-ten, enhanced mobility of seniors and individuals with disabilities program operated by Pender Adult Services. We'll open the public hearing.
How you doing today? I'm Jim Longenbach, I'm the Transportation Director for Pender Adult Services.
Nice to have you.
Thank you. So, the fifty-three-ten operating grant pays for transportation for elderly and disabled folks. We take them all over the county, we take them to doctor appointments. As a whole, our system does about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year worth of transportation services is what we provide. And it's going wherever they need to go. We take them food shopping, doctor appointments, we take folks to school, we take folks to work. So, normally what we would do is we would match that grant with our rope money. This year for fiscal year twenty-one, the state didn't give us any rope money. We're not sure if we're getting it back for next year or not. So, it would be a ninety thousand dollar grant that we, a ninety thousand dollar match that we would need. That's a fifty percent federal and fifty percent local match. So, if we get the rope money, we can match it with that again, and that's not an issue. But I have to have these applications turned in by the first of December.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Longenbach?
I don't think I quite understand the issue with regards to rope money. Why is that so empty this year?
We didn't get any at all for fiscal year twenty-one. State took it all back. They gave us no rope money at all.
Final, no appeal? When did that happen?
It happened, I think it was in January, was it January? Yeah. Yeah, we got CARES money to replace it for this year. But with DOT being in the state they're in, we're not sure we're getting it back.
Have we asked?
What's that?
Have we asked?
We have, and we're not getting a definitive answer.
What is it, what is it we're being asked?
So...
To allow them to fund the match. If they get the grant, it's a fifty-fifty match, is that, that's how I understood your presentation to be.
Or is this just a pass-through for us to them?
I don't...
Because if it is, we're talking about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
No, fifty percent of that is from federal, so it's a ninety thousand dollar match is what we need to come up with.
So, I guess what we need to be specific on is what we're being asked to do today.
Ninety thousand dollar match.
And to which, where is the ninety thousand coming from? Be, you know, be specific, we just can't...
We're looking for it to come from the county.
From what pot of money?
I said, I mean, we normally match it with that rope funding. I don't know that we're getting it.
So, it sounds like you have a problem, and it sounds like we need some options to help you fix that problem.
Yes.
But don't come in here saying you've got a problem as important as this program is to this community and just throw it up in the air. What is it that you want?
I'd like to walk out of here knowing I got the match for that operating fund.
So, the federal monies will give you ninety thousand dollars, and you are uncertain as to whether NC DOT will match it with the ninety thousand dollars.
Correct.
So, you want the county to provide the ninety thousand dollars in the event North Carolina Department of Transportation will not allow you to have the money.
Correct.
And the twenty-twenty-one funds, the ninety thousand from NC DOT were clawed back and replaced with the CARES funding.
Right.
Do you have CARES funding available to replace it for next year?
We'll not have CARES funding to replace it for next year. The CARES funding ends on June thirty, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one.
Mr. Manager, have you talked with these folks about this situation?
No, ma'am, not until it was on the agenda, as I were aware of it. We do have an item five point four that involves that we have been working with Pender Adult Services on, but it's unrelated to the transportation funds.
Would that be in next year's budget, the ninety thousand?
It's not in this year's budget, it's not in this year's...
It would be for fiscal year twenty-two, not twenty-one.
When I say fiscal year, I refer to both years that the year, that the fiscal year is in. You're not talking county, are we talking county years or fiscal years?
Fiscal year.
Okay, so that's, so we're, right now, we're in the twenty-twenty-one year.
Right.
So, you're talking about the twenty-one...
These grants are for the twenty-two fiscal year.
Twenty-one, twenty-two year, okay.
From July twenty-one to July...
It was being referred to as a calendar year earlier, so that's kind of what confused me, too.
So, ultimately, you would apply for it, if you're awarded it, the obligation of the county would be to fund that as part of the twenty-one, twenty-two budget year, the ninety thousand dollar match.
Yes.
If you don't get it, then it's a moot point.
What's that?
If you don't get it, it's a moot point.
Right.
Is there any obligation on applying that you would automatically accept that if awarded, and is there a statement the board has to sign that says by applying, we are committing the ninety thousand dollar match?
Yes.
So, you would be obligating funds in this current fiscal year for next fiscal year?
Can we do that?
Meg, what does the auditor say about that?
I wouldn't think that we could.
It depends on when you actually receive the funds as to when you'll have the match actually due. And if we're talking about a twenty-twenty-two grant, I would think it would be until next year.
Yes, so during the budgetary process, we would have to make certain that this was identified and...
When does your application due?
December first.
But I can guarantee if we commit to the ninety thousand dollars match, the state's not gonna, they're not gonna fund it. They'll just let us own it.
You mean in future years?
Yes.
They'll back their money out for future years?
They'll say you did it one year, you're gonna do it forever. But we're kind of painted into a corner here, I mean...
Yeah, the need is there.
And we're kind of painted into a corner because we weren't discussing this a month ago or two months ago, we're discussing it now.
Can I say a couple words?
Sure, come on up, please.
I mean, these are annual requests that we make, so it's the same time period that it would normally be. I think the difficulty this year is the state has at the last second said they're not going to provide that rope funding that's normally used as the match. So, that threw a monkey wrench in our planning also. But normally, our request from our agency is including, Pender Adult Services Agency includes the local match that covers transportation. And this is a formality that we go through, we're required to go through in order to submit that application.
Can you please identify yourself by name and title?
I'm sorry, I'm Wes Davis, I'm the Executive Director of Pender Adult Services.
Okay, and...
Jim is our Transportation Director.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like the next two items are also requiring us to match sixty thousand dollars more.
Correct, I think that's correct.
So, we're not just talking about ninety thousand dollars a match, we're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand worth of money.
And then sixteen thousand after that.
Well, I was kind of combining both of them, but yeah.
So, NC DOT has, you know, they were going to remove a lot of our funding last year, but the CARES monies became available. I think that's why they removed it, because CARES money was there. The future year, they have thrown us a monkey wrench in that position, but it's not just Pender County, it's every county in the state they're requiring this of. The problem that, as I see it, is that we can't submit our application without county approval. We could discuss with the county how Pender Adult Services can help to meet that match in the event the rope fundings are not reinstituted by the state NC DOT. That's a huge match for our agency or even the county to request, but I don't know how we can, if we do not receive approval, then we can't apply for those funds, correct?
I mean, I understand that part of it.
But what I'm trying to say is that I think if the state DOT goes to that point, that I would hope we could come to an agreement with the county as to how our agency and the county could meet that match where the county may not have to meet the full match. I don't know if I'm being clear, but...
Wes, reading between the lines, you are being clear, but this, when the rope funds were clawed back and replaced with CARES funds, you kind of had to know that there might be a problem, and so is this the first that we have heard of it on the county level of your situation?
The issue with NC DOT is that you get different guidance every other day.
Well, the issue with NC DOT is just about broken, it has been for a while.
I agree.
So, there's no agreement to it, it's a fact. So, all the more reason why at here at the ninth hour, there hasn't been any conversation before now. Because, again, this program is beneficial to our citizens, we want to help you, but we're kind of backed in a corner, and I don't like that. I don't think that's a very good way to do business, quite frankly.
I'm in agreement.
This is the first time I remember we've had it this, this way. Usually, there's the...
It's a formality.
We sail through these things pretty fast.
Correct.
And there's not usually a hiccup with the other funding streams. So, our concern is, but it's kind of almost like we're putting the cart ahead of the horse here to make sure that we get the horse there.
Would it be, rather than having the discussion here, could we, Mr. Chair, put this matter aside and let our finance people and our county manager come to us with some options and maybe work this out and get back together on a telephone conference or something to get it resolved?
What kind of timeline do you all have on this?
Two weeks or something like that.
Two weeks?
Yeah, the first, yeah.
Say, two weeks?
Yeah, December first, I think that's about two weeks from now, close to it. I mean, the only, the only, I mean, the only way that we could commit to right now, because we haven't even done that budget year, is just commit to fund it. And we're basically saying is we got to create a line item for it or increase your budget by that amount next year. Or you say you're taking it from fund, you're gonna pay for it out of growth, but then add it to their, I mean, that's about, Mr. Manager, somebody help me here, I'm kind of swimming in a circle.
It is a tough spot, and those letters are common because they don't, they don't want to review an application that's, that is DOA in the sense...
Has no commitment by the county.
But at the same time, we don't know what's going to happen between now and July one in terms of our budget, and I would think there's going to be a lot of grants awarded to folks that aren't going to fulfill those obligations through the budget process. So, I haven't seen the commitment letter that the county would ultimately have to sign, but I would have to think there's an out, so to speak, in regards to... If we decide not to accept those grant dollars. Right.
Yeah, then, then the seniors and individuals with disabilities are going to suffer to the tune of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm not...
That they're already used to, you know, for services they're already used to. I mean, am I misstating that?
No, you're correct.
We just have to, I mean, we just have to, you just have to know that going into the next year's budget, if we commit to these things, basically, we're committing to the funding, the matching, the three things that, you know what, first thing we got to do is commit to fund these three increases in next year's budget.
Yep. I don't think we have a choice.
For his department, really, I mean...
Skip Green is in the back. Skip's here for five-four. Skip, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I am. Could any of this, part of this matching requirements be used for five-point-four, those five-point-four funds, could they be used for what we're hearing here in terms of the local match for COVID-related needs? Right, the small city stuff you're here to present, or that I'm gonna present for you and you weigh in on? Any of these local match for disabled seniors and disabled individuals program, enhanced mobility, they've been, they've been supplemented by COVID. So evidently, they, obviously, they are COVID-related. This program under five-point-four is a COVID-related program, so...
Come on, come on.
Can you come up to the microphone?
And please introduce yourself by name and title.
Skip Green, Skip Green Associates Grant Writer. Is, I would think that as long as the, the, it was shown that it was COVID-related, particularly that there's an increased need for the transportation as a result of COVID, is that really this particular program is so broad, you could almost fit anything into it, really. But again, when I get up and do the explanation, the main problem with that is this particular grant program was first come, first served. They had about twenty-six million dollars. Last Thursday, they put out that they had received sufficient number of applications, that they've stopped accepting applications. But it's my understanding there actually is additional funds that the state can either reopen this or based on the priorities of the state, they can move it for other purposes. But again, this, this could be placed as a part of this particular program.
You know, I'm not, I'm not gonna, especially right now, you know, I'm not gonna want to, you know, kill this service, risk killing this service in the next budget year. So, obviously, we're dancing around the issue, I'm gonna vote to do it, and we just got, we have to know that, that there's a real good chance that we're gonna have to...
Fund this for a long...
We're committing to do it, and there's a real good chance we're gonna have to fulfill that commitment
Yep.
in the, in this next budget process. It's not a guarantee we will. We might, we might have an out, but we, but it's not likely.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Wes, what does your board say about this? Have y'all had any meetings or discussions with regards to this funding or replacement funding?
I don't think we were aware that the state was not going to provide any rope funds at the time of our last meeting.
When was your last meeting?
But I think our board would be willing, as I was trying to state, that we would try to help find part of that match if, if the county's not able to meet that and NC DOT is not providing any rope funding. So, I think we would try to meet that commitment for that year.
Wes, when was your board made aware that there would be no state-level funding?
It was probably, our last meeting was about three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago, okay. And this, was this discussed at all?
We weren't aware of that at that time.
Okay, so it hasn't been discussed with your board?
But I think our board is willing, but I know our board would be willing to try to meet that commitment. And, you know, in future years, we wouldn't probably have the ability to do that if that's going to continue beyond this upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year.
I'm gonna be made the bad guy again.
And I wonder if part of this match can, if we don't have to accept the full amount.
They tell us what we're gonna get for it, so we may not even get all ninety thousand dollars in the federal money, it depends on what they get in federal money, and then they distribute it. Two years ago, we only got half of it.
Excuse me, I have a question. Does Pender Adult Services have a board, and is there a separate board for the past trans?
There is an advisory board for transportation, a transportation advisory board, but the Pender Adult Services Board of Directors ultimately responsible for transportation.
Will, do we have any public? Do we have any public?
No, sir, we have no signups. And I know there are multiple issues here, but, I mean, we do commit to funding in future years as, I mean, that's, that's, you know, we have leases for equipment or purchases where we're gonna be, you know, we're committing to spend money in budget years. Now, that, and my recommendation would be we have the manager, you authorize, if you're inclined to make a motion to approve this, that you authorize the manager to sign, because then he, he clearly has no ability to vote on what happens. And so, he's certifying it based on what he's heard, but that, so nobody feels like they're obligated to vote, because I've just got to say it, none of the five of you may be on the board when the budget gets adopted in January. It could be five totally different people. So, I mean, that's the reality that faces us at any time on the front end.
Excuse me, I missed that. What, say that again?
Well, we could all resign, or get wrecked, or you just...
Right, you could move away, you could do whatever, I mean, that's a, you know, things happen.
The rapture.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, he's...
I'd still be here, but y'all be gone.
You are an attorney, aren't you?
But other than...
So am I, don't be ugly.
Other than debt...
Oh, I didn't mean anything, but...
I know you did.
Basically, other than debt, you can't commit a future board to anything.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's, that's the reality of it.
Well, here's the thing, they're not even going to be able to apply if we don't get past this.
So, we got, we...
We're stuck between rug and hard place.
I don't see it's not proven this, that's my...
So, we're gonna close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we commit to this with the county manager being able to sign at time that it is so required.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. With those conditions, all those in agreement?
And I, I want to say this, Mr. Chairman, I don't know, Mr. Manager or whoever's applying for the funds, I want this kind of stuff worked out in the future before it comes before us.
It was an unusual year, though.
Well, it continues to be unusual.
I know, I know, I know.
Has there ever been an issue with this before, and I'm praying that it's not an issue again after this year? Everything is up in the air, and we don't know what's going on with it.
It's not just you, please understand, it's been, everybody is clawing for funding, and we can only do so much.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next public hearing, which is a public hearing resolution approving grant applications and authorizing local share of fifty-three-eleven Community Transportation Program Admin. You're gonna stay at bat on this, too, right?
You know what?
Never mind, go ahead. We're gonna open the public hearing. You're still at bat, is what I meant to say.
That's, that's our administrative grant that pays for our, that pays for our salaries and all the other things that go and get involved with having the transportation service.
So, you only need forty-one thousand of the two-hundred-and-six-thousand that it takes to run your, run this operation?
Correct.
Okay, any...
So, it's a little less than twenty-five percent max or something like that, I guess, if I didn't...
It's a twenty percent match.
Yeah, twenty percent.
Any other, any questions by commissioners? Do we have any signups for this, Mr. Turney?
Other than that president.
Do you want to close it, I'll make a motion?
Yeah, we're gonna close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, all those opposed. Vote is four to one. All right, and we're gonna move on to the next one, which is public hearing resolution approving grant applications and authorizing local share for capital grant operated by Pender Adult Services in the amount of eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-five, local share being sixteen thousand five fifty-seven.
Okay, that's, we're getting one new van next year. And it's a fifty-nine thousand dollar van, and we're also getting new camera equipment that will help us to be able to track the vans better and see live what's going on on our vans at any given time.
In light of the finances and the constraints of this year, is this a timely request?
Well, the replacement vehicle, yeah, we do that every year. The cameras, I could probably push off another year, but the camera systems that we have now are outdated and really not working very well. So, anytime we have an issue, we got a big problem.
Any other questions?
So, I guess they're for public safety and for legal purposes?
Yes.
All right, any other questions by commissioners? Any signups for this, Mr. Turney?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move approval, Mr. Chairman. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, those opposed. Vote is four to one. All right. Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Next item, public hearing to receive comment regarding Pender County's interest in seeking funds for the Community Development Block Grant. I think you just touched on that, Mr. Manager, but we'll open the public hearing.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of weeks ago, I was called by Mayor Cowan, Town of Bergoff, and Mr. Davis, who's still here, was on the call. They advised me that they have, they have an interest in applying for small cities community development block, block grant, COVID funds, up to nine hundred thousand dollars. They're determining a preliminary budget for that project, which has three components. The first component involves purchasing a generator-provided backup electrical service to meet the kitchen, including refrigeration needs for, primarily for meals-on-wheels, prepared meal programs offered over at Pender Adult Services. Second one, make modifications to ingress and egress to the food service portico at the rear of the facility. Second one, make modifications to ingress and egress to the food service portico at the rear of the facility, um, as well as project administration. So in order for us to apply for these funds, we have to have a public hearing, um, to allow the public to come speak about a potential project that may be eligible for this, for these funds. Again, the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program, COVID program, and Skip Green's here. Skip was also on the call with Mayor Cowan and Wes Davis regarding the, the potential application for Pender Adult Services and can answer questions. But ultimately, this is a, I would say a formality, but in order for us to apply, there has to be something in the application registry that we actually he- held this public hearing, so.
Thank you. If, if I may, the, the state of North Carolina annually receives, uh, Small Cities Community Development Block Grants. There are actually, there are two required public hearings before you can submit an application. The first public hearing, which has been advertised for today, is actually the first public hearing, which is just a general public hearing, which I'll just quickly run through what the program can do. Then after receiving comments, there really is no action or anything required by the board. If the board then should choose, then there will be a second public hearing, which will be specific to the application. Once you hold the first public hearing, it's good for about ten, for about the next ten months. Anytime you should want to potentially, uh, submit a Small Cities Community Development Block Grant, your first public hearing is out of the way. So, real quickly, I'll kind of run through what the program can do and, uh, so that will meet the intent of the first required public hearing. As I mentioned, the state annually receives funds from HUD, the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program. Uh, the programs is administered by two different departments, the North Carolina Department of Commerce, through the Rural Economic Development Division, and then the, uh, State Department of Environmental and Natural Resources. The Community Development Block Grant that's administered by, uh, by Commerce is, uh, it is for housing rehabilitation, economic development, or the two major areas that they look at in, uh, community, uh, revitalization. The, uh, part that's in the Department of Natural, Environment and Natural Resources, it is specific to water and sewer projects, which are for health and safety. So like briefly, the, uh, the, the CDBG program is for health and safety, so COVID falls within that guidelines. The other purposes are to help low to moderate income and economic development. The, um, you can do such things as, uh, housing development, acquisition, disposition, demolition clearance, relocation, uh, then you have things, uh, where in, in public services all fall within that. The, uh, the, the three major things again, as far as a, a, a program, is that it's health and safety or sixty percent low to moderate income. You also have some special, uh, populations such as elderly and special needs that also qualify. The state generally, the, uh, the community, uh, revitalization projects that they have, they are basically done where they'll once or twice a year, they'll put out, uh, for applications. The economic development is ongoing, that's, uh, continuous as far as when they'll accept applications. The water and sewer is for health and safety. It's also, uh, specific times that you have to do it. Uh, the COVID was a part of the CARES Act. The state in Sep-, about mid-September, they announced at beginning October first, they had twenty-seven million bucks that was first come, first served, and they began taking applications in October, a maximum of nine hundred thousand. Last week, again, they stated that they have, had received enough applications to expend the money. Uh, but again, it's my understanding there is funds for, uh, you could have, they could reopen it. One of the things that the county may want to consider is, uh, if, as far as if you possibly wanna pursue the, um, a, a, a application as far as COVID, is that what you mentioned earlier as far as the transportation, there has not act, we have not had a uh, application specific, a public hearing specific to the application. So if you should choose, that could be an additional activity that we could add on to it. Uh, and then another thought is to go ahead and move as far as you can. I'm working with another county where today they actually wanna hit and authorize the application on the condition, you know, subject to the, it opening back up again. So again, you may want to just move as aggressively as you can so you'd be in a position, if they open it back up first come, first served, that you're not, you know, waiting three or four, five weeks for another meeting. I'll be glad to entertain any questions you may have.
Anyone got any questions? Okay, um.
So Skip, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So Skip, next month, we will hold another public hearing specific to this project, correct?
I mean, if y'all would choose to go that route, we, we, we would basically have a, go ahead and basically develop the application. We'd ask, again, that y'all's consideration to say we would like to submit the application, again, subject to the state opening it back up. And that way, we just sit on it. If the state opens it up, we'll submit it. If they don't, then everybody's had a good time, you know, as far as getting to that point.
So the funds are awarded and the county is fiduciary of, of those grant awards or grant funds?
Right, but what, what we had spoken about earlier, it would be, um, you could al, they would almost be, uh, like a, a sub-grantee, but if y'all would have, y'all would en- enter into a, it wouldn't have to be in the application, it would be more of a letter of intent from both parties. But if you could receive X amount of money, then these are the things that would be done. So, uh, the, the funds would all, as a grantee, it'll come to you, you're actually responsible as far as when the state would come in to administer, but you can have basically like a sub-grantee that you would be purchasing things for or uh, doing as far as the transportation.
And this is a full grant, this is in the matching fund situation?
No, this is, this is a hundred percent.
Yes.
And the only thing, again, we'd have to look at on the other is generally, Community Development Block Grant is not considered federal funding, so I don't know if this other, you know, when you, sometimes there are restrictions on what, but, uh, if they're using DOT, I mean, generally, this state would use Community Development Block Grant as a, as a match.
Any other questions?
So I, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't see a lo- loss in this, I don't know why we would not pursue this. This looks like something that we, we need to continue, um, to proceed with.
Yes, sir. It's, uh, we spoke, like I said, a couple of weeks ago with Wes and Mayor Cowan, who's on their board. And the, as you can imagine, with COVID, the need for Meals on Wheels has, has only, uh, only increased. So this will help them provide it, and, and I think there was a component of it too, Wes, related to the generator for disaster. Makes you more resilient, providing those meals as maybe other meals during a disaster, disaster.
Okay, this does not take a formal vote, does not require a formal vote, correct?
Correct.
And there are no sign ups, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we'll just go ahead and end the
Thank you.
Public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Green, we appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna move on to public information. Um, first item there is recognition of Jane Jones. Come on up to the podium. She's the area agency, um, she's our director of aging. Alan, do you wanna come up with her? Just, I'm not gonna ask you to speak. Well, I think I'm gonna take care of that in just a second. Being the member on the board with the COG, I spend, I, I know Jane probably a little bit better than some of you, you may know her, some of you may know her, but had the opportunity to watch her in action for the last, what, since two thousand and six, when I came on this board? And, uh, I can't think of a, I hate to see you go, I can't think of a better person for that job. You've done an outstanding, um, job with it and it's one of those things where we know you're gonna retire, we just don't wanna think about it, you know?
I have a good replacement.
Yeah, I, I know that, I know that. We still hate to see you go, but.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, I've got something I wanna read here. It's a little bit of information about you, thing we would like to share with everybody.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, just give me a couple of minutes here, I'm gonna work through this. It's, uh, let's see, Mrs. Jane Jones has made a momentous difference in many lives throughout her profession. She started her career as a registered nurse, working for over ten years in a variety of hospital industry, um, industry, the hospital industry and medical settings. Her employment in these ten years included Cone Health System and Burlington Industries with a focus on adult medicine and geriatrics. She later returned to the college at the University of Wilmington, North Carolina, receiving a bachelor's in social work. Jane will be retiring as the, the director of the Area Agency on Aging with the Cape Fear Council of Governments, and that will be November the thirtieth. After nearly thirty years of service with the agency, she began her employment with the Cape Fear Council of Government, as the Regional Long-Term Care Ombudsman in nineteen ninety-one, and became the Director of the Area Agency on Aging in nineteen ninety-six. Cape Fear Council of Governments Region O is a regional planning agency covering Brunswick, Columbus, New Hanover, and Pender Counties. The Area Agency on Aging administers the older Americans Act funds and many other federal and state grants. As the Director, some of her duties included assisting local counties to assess the needs of older citizens currently and in the future and administering federal, state, and local funds to provide a wide array of community-based services, supports that enable older persons to live independently in their own homes when possible. Jane is also the organizer and facilitator of the Cape Fear Elder Abuse Prevention Network. Since two thousand and six, the grassroots coalition of aging and human service professionals, volunteers within the four county area not only meet monthly, but also plan, sponsor, and provide consumer, community, education regarding elder abuse and fraud, scams, prevention. Didn't know until I got involved with this just how much of that goes on. We appreciate you looking out for those folks. I never even thought about that until I got on the COG. Jane's focus has always been to assist lead agencies for aging services to provide solid programs, ensuring they are all good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. It's a good thing, look out for those dollars. She excels as a leader and is known for working collaboratively with multiple agencies to leverage more program services for older adults and their caregivers. If you ask anyone who's had the pleasure of working with Jane, they would echo the statements above that she is a consummate advocate for seniors, loves and truly cares for people, and is always going above and beyond the call of duty. And I think that describes you as well as anything that we could say about you today. And, um, we have a plaque for you. Because of, I'm gonna read the plaque from here, if you don't mind, then I'll go present it to you. It says, "Certificate of Special Recognition is Presented to Jane Jones in appreciation for over thirty years of hard work and dedication for the Area Agency of Aging and on behalf of Pender County and its citizens." And this is coming from Pender County and we thank you so much.
And I thank you. I do wanna say I really appreciate this, you know, you don't know how much because it's good to get recognized for ongoing work with our partners like Wes Davis and Pender Adult Services. I can tell you, over the past twenty-five years, I've seen them grow from a very small building to what you see down here down the street in Topsail over, in Topsail, obviously. And he continues to have that vision to expand services for older adults, and he works at it. He very quietly has this mission and he tries to get this done. We've worked together on many projects to expand services in your county. And it's been my pleasure to work with all of you over these many years, different ones of you over these years, and also county managers, Chad. Chad was an intern in our office. I met Chad quite a while ago.
A long, long time ago.
It wasn't that long.
It was. That's a relative term, but just to reiterate the chairman's comments, I, I enjoyed my time with the COG and, um, Jane, there was no more passionate person that I've ever encountered in public service than, than Jane in terms of her commitment to, um, to the area's aging population, so, um, very well deserved and thank you for your service.
Thank you, and thank you so much.
Thank you for looking out for our older citizens. We appreciate that.
Wes is gonna continue.
I know, but Wes wants to come up and say a few, couple of words, actually. He's gonna seize the opportunity here, I think.
Yeah, I love these opportunities. I want to, you know, Jane, um, gave us some plugs, but really, uh, this is about you and all the hard work that you've done. Uh, she recognizes that she serves four counties, but we always felt like she really served Pender County. Every year, at the end of the year, when I purposefully overspend my dollars on services for our seniors, for Meals on Wheels and, and home aid, generally, I could go back to Jane and say, "I have overspent," and she can go find some funds at the state level from other counties that did not spend those dollars. And so that would help cover those expenses. And as, as I said, I did that purposefully. It wasn't poor management. Because I knew that, that nine times out of ten, they were gonna find some extra dollars for us. That doesn't happen anymore in the last few years, but for several years, we did. But the great thing about Jane is she worked, we worked with her in a collaborative fashion, uh, not necessarily a punitive where they were always telling us we didn't do things the right way. Um, they really helped to leverage dollars and help us to be creative. Um, and over the years, we've seen Pender do fun and new things, such as, we were the first county in the state to do Meals on Wheels vehicles that had the vehicles that were, uh, with ovens and refrigeration units, and now it's statewide, but we were the first one to do it. But it was through people like Jane that helped us to get the state to help fund that project and to do those things. So this is my opportunity to say thank you to you, Jane, for all your support, all your help over the last, well, for me, it's been for the last, since ninety-one or ninety-six. So anyway, great thanks to you, Jane, and best wishes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next item is six point two, Pender County Resiliency Task Force Presentation. Ms. Peterson.
Do we use this thing? All right, um, good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Sure, just, you might wanna raise the mic.
Okay, I'm a little tall. My name is Les Peterson. I'm, uh, the four H G Development Agent here in Pender County for North Carolina Cooperative Extension.
Hello, um, my name is Monique Treves and I am the Public Health Educator for the Pender County Health Department.
Hi, I'm Rosetta Royster. I'm an Assistant District Attorney here in Pender County.
Good evening, I am Annie Murphy and I am the Foster Care Licensing Social Worker and Adoption Social Worker for Pender County DSS.
And together, along with a lot of other individuals, we make up the Steering Committee of the Pender County Resiliency Task Force, newly formed. Um, so the Pender County Resiliency Task Force is a diverse network of organizations, businesses, and individuals who are dedicated to building a stronger, trauma-informed community by increasing awareness and education of adverse childhood experiences or ACEs in resilient science in Pender County. And I wanna give a quick shout out to all of our steering committee members. Um, there's fifteen of us from several different organizations across Pender County who have worked really, really, really hard the last several months. Uh, I've pestered them a lot with emails and Zoom meetings on how, of how to get this done, so I really want to, um, send a shout out to all of those amazing folks. And before we get started with the rest of our formal presentation, I want to, um, get into our why. And we will have Annie Murphy from the Pender County Department of Social Services share her story, her why. In North Carolina, each year, there are on average seventy-eight hundreds of substantiated cases of child maltreatment and fifty-six hundred children who enter foster care. But this data does not adequately convey the full scope of childhood trauma in our communities. That is just one of the reasons why we started the Resiliency Task. That is just one of the reasons why we started the Resiliency Task Force. Our task force is made up of diverse organizations with their own focus of why we are doing this work, and this is Annie's why.
The DSS call. Her name was Addie, short for Adelaide. She called me Murf, Murph, short for Murphy. Addie was five years old and was in foster care. A week before I met her, her foster parent was teaching her how to pray. I remember that DSS call like it was yesterday. Hi, Ms. Murphy, I don't mean to bother you, but I'm concerned about Addie. I thought it was a great idea to teach her how to pray. So I'm teaching her the children's prayer. Now, I lay me down to sleep, I pray the Lord my soul to keep. If I die before I wake, I pray the Lord my soul to take. I'm concerned about Addie because she refuses to say that prayer. Instead, she prays, "Another night, nowhere to sleep. Another day, no food to eat. If Dad comes home, things won't be right. If Mom gets high, another fight. Dear Jesus, I just want to sleep. Please bless me tomorrow with something to eat." Over the past four years, North Carolina has been severely impacted by Hurricane Matthew, Florence, and Dory. Out of the three, Florence aimed her arrow of destruction directly at Pender County, directly at many children and families already inflicted by poverty, drug abuse, crime, and systemic discrimination. As a result, many families were pierced by hopelessness and despair. Then came COVID-19. Unfortunately, abuse and neglect did not stop when COVID-19 started. The ramifications of COVID-19 will have a long-lasting impact on the livelihoods of low-income families, essential workers, young children, families in color, of color, and the elderly. A good education, which is viewed by many ordinary families as a way out of poverty, is currently a downward slide due to the digital dilemma caused by COVID-19. Many fear that it's an educational deficiency that would never be recovered. No school means no meals for many low-income and poor families. No school also means no safe place, no connection to safety resources for children suffering from abuse and neglect. Like Addie's foster parent, the DSS call was the only lifeline available for many families after the storms and in the midst of COVID-19. Just like lifeguards, the DSS staff and other essential county staff sprung into action and to reconnect, restore, revitalize, and reconnect families, homes, and communities. There is one word, one word that describes the DSS call, resiliency. From the moment the DSS call is made, Pender County DSS responds strategically, along with our captain of the ship, Mr. Wes Stewart. Strategically, with a goal to begin with the end in mind. In other words, the goal is to engage families, empower families, and equip families to function efficiently again on their own without the SSS involvement. To achieve this goal, the Pender County Task Force aims to educate parents, youth, and community members on being a trauma-informed community, and to train each entity resilient building skills. Having resilient building skills will provide ongoing support to our local and surrounding health and human services departments. Having such skills will also improve the overall educational, mental, physical, and social well-being of families in crisis. So you question, how does resiliency relate to the DSS call? Yes, I am glad you asked that. At the close of each workday, it does not matter to the DSS worker how many times they have to push their lunch break back an hour to solve a family problem. It does not matter how many times they have to assist a teammate with a family crisis. Nor does it matter how many emails and phone calls they must make in a kind and timely manner. What matters is how many times they respond to the DSS call in a kind and encouraging manner. How many children were able to visit with their birth parents and their siblings today? And most importantly, how many times and how many birth parents were reunited with their children? That, my friends, is the DSS call. So tonight in closing, I would empower all of you to be a beacon of hope for children and families in crisis in Pender County. So I will leave you tonight with a profound message from no one other than Dr. Zeus. To the world, you may be one person, but to one person, one child, you may be the world. It only takes one responsible adult to make a huge difference in the life of a child. Thank you.
Thank you, Annie. So what are ACEs, you might be asking yourself? Um, the CDC and Kaiser Permanente Adverse Childhood Experiences Study is one of the largest investigations of how childhood abuse and neglect and household challenges impact later life, health, and well-being. The original ACEs study was conducted by Kaiser Permanente from nineteen ninety-five to nineteen ninety-seven with two waves of data collection. Over seventeen thousand people completed confidential surveys regarding their childhood experiences and current health status and behaviors. Participants in the study reflected a cross-section of middle-class American adults. You can see on the graphs here the different breakdowns by participants of gender, race, Asian education. ACEs are adverse childhood experiences that harm children's developing brains by producing toxic amounts of stress and lead to challenging, lead to changing how they respond to stress and damaging their immune systems so profoundly that the effects show up decades later. ACEs cause much of our burden of chronic disease, most mental illness, and are at the root of most violence. Almost two-thirds of adults surveyed reported at least one adverse childhood experience, and the majority of respondents who reported at least one ACE reported more than one. Twelve point five percent of participants reported four or more ACEs. The study looked at three different types of ACEs. Abuse, which includes emotional, physical, and sexual abuse, neglect, including physical and emotional neglect, and household challenges, including growing up in a household where the mother, where there was substance misuse, where the mother was violently mistreated, mental illness, parental separation or divorce, or had an incarcerated household member. Twenty-five years later, there has been a lot more research done, and we know a lot more about adverse childhood experiences. We've even added two more realms of ACEs. Adverse community experiences that you see in the soil, such as violence, poverty, structural racism, or discrimination, and adverse climate experiences, such as hurricanes, wildfires, and a pandemic. If you look at this infographic from ACEs Connection, you see that the tree is adverse childhood experiences as we grow from birth to eighteen. And in the soil, we have adverse community experiences. And when you think about plant science, you're not able to grow healthy trees if you don't have healthy soil. ACEs can happen to anyone in any household, in the community, or in the environment. This is why it's so important to get the entire community involved, no matter your occupation, age, race, or socioeconomic status. Children who suffer trauma or multiple adverse experiences have much greater risks for a range of negative outcomes, including difficulty in school, substance abuse, problem sexual behavior, juvenile offenses, poor work performance as an adult, unemployment, incarceration, mental illness, or even chronic illness. And a few more statistics for you, um, according to the Center for Child and Family Health, teens with four or more ACEs have higher resting heart rates, body mass index, and rates of obesity. A single trauma increases the likelihood of using alcohol by age fourteen by two to three times. Ninety-three percent of juvenile offenders report at least one childhood trauma, and sixty percent of homeless women can be attributed to childhood adversity, and forty-five percent for men. And ACEs are highly correlated with seven of the ten leading causes of death in the United States. Someone with an ACE score of four or more means that could be any of the four of the ten ACEs is two times more likely to have cancer or heart disease. Someone with an ACE score of five is eight times more likely to become an alcoholic, and someone whose ACE score is six or more is twenty, is likely to die twenty years earlier than those without any ACEs. These preventable outcomes are tragic for the individuals involved, but they also come at a high cost for the communities that they live in. The CDC in prevention, um, estimates that the lifetime cost for a single incident of child maltreatment ranges from ninety-eight thousand to two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, based on expenses in mental health, healthcare, education, and justice systems, as well as loss productivity as an adult. This means that for every one hundred children who experience maltreatment, their community assumes a long-term cost burden of at least one hundred million dollars.
All right, so what does that mean for Pender County? So, what we're trying to do is really make, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
We can hear you, but folks at home may not be able to hear you.
I see, okay. Yes, so, um, what we're trying to do is make the connection between, um, ACEs, adverse childhood experiences, and their connection with, um, health disparities. So, we talk to you a lot, especially from the Health Department, about our community health assessment and what people think are also the, um, issues, um, in our community, but also the soc and data from that. So, when we look at, um, Pender County and a snapshot of that, and we do have a graphic for you all, um, I don't know if you want it, but, um, we really just wanted to kind of take a snapshot of, um, poverty and economic hardship, and then, um, access to affordable housing. So, in our county, we have fifteen percent of the residents do live in poverty, um, twenty, twenty percent of children in our county live in poverty, um, and then thirty, almost thirty-two percent of residents are considered low-income. That's, uh, fifty thousand dollars, uh, for a family of four. So, we also, um, as part of our coalition, our, our, our task force, we have the schools onboard as well, and they did a RAP survey, which is a rapid assessment, um, of Adolescent Prevention Services Survey, well, it's a mouthful. But, um, they actually, there was some pretty flooring, um, data that came from that survey, and some of it, and I'm just going to read some of it to you, it's, uh, thirty percent of our students, um, and these were from third grade all the way to twelfth grade, um, and it was two separate data points, but thirty percent of, uh, students answered positively for depression. Um, approximately thirty percent struggle with managing their anger. Uh, almost ten percent surveyed indicated that they had suicidal thoughts or attempted self-harm. Five percent indicated being abused, and six percent indicated using drugs. If we can predict that because of a, because a child, a parent, a guardian, um, or our little five-year-old Addie that, um, Ms. Annie described, might experience some of these mental health, um, issues, then we may be able to intercept that and help them learn how to become more resilient, um, whether that's just having a positive individual, or, uh, creating new programs in our county to help with addressing these, these health disparities. That thought is of, I'm sorry, that is a thought of combining our efforts, um, to blossoming a resilient community. So what exactly is resiliency? So we talk about resiliency, it's just you over, it's somebody being able to overcome, um, certain adversities, whether that's, you know, being put in foster care and having that positive individual. Having them overcome adversity, uh, so, resiliency is something that is not innate, uh, so kids, um, everybody isn't born with this resiliency, it's, it's something that you, you build over time. And somebody that's a positive individual in your life, these are the people that you get these experiences from. So, that's what we're really trying to incorporate into our county here. We want to put it across sectors, and we want to start incorporating it in the school systems, and, um, having more trauma-informed individuals like you all, uh, the commissioners, uh, just knowing what that means, and, um, just being more trauma-informed. So, resiliency, again, is not something that people are just born with, they, they get it from positive role models, and, um, and it's, it's built. But however, adversity is not destiny, like you, uh, like you heard from Ms. Annie's very moving story. Although Addie had a lot of adversity, it wasn't something that, um, defined her, it wasn't something that, um, kept her down. She had somebody that was there, she had DSS that was there, she had other positive individuals that were there that wanted to look out for her, and that's what caused, that's what created her resiliency, that's what created her to be strong. And that's what we want to incorporate into all these sectors, like I was saying. So what can be done about ACEs? So, I mean, we have great programs right now in Pender County that are going on, we have the, uh, at the Health Department alone, we have, um, newborn postpartum home assessments that we do with, uh, high-risk pregnancies, just to make sure that we're making connections for these folks. Also, the Resiliency Task Force, we really want to become a hub for, um, a lot of resources, so one person can come straight to us and say, you know, um, "We're looking for housing," or, "I don't know where to go for this, or I don't know where to go for that," so, we can, um, we can become that, um, that hub for them. Other, other things that we can do is mental illness and substance use treatment, I know that's a big one, um, but it's real, and we know we have the opioid epidemic going on, and we have a task force to address that as well, and that's something that we can partner with as a Resiliency Task Force. Um, and then we have some other ones here as well, um, parenting training programs for parents that might be teen parents. Um, I don't know if any of you all have kids, but it's a tough job, and it's really stressful. So, to be able to have parenting programs where these, these young parents, or even parents that, you know, might not know how to do this, even having training programs like that could really help increase resiliency, not only in the parents, because if you have healthy parents and you have resilient parents, then you're going to have resilient kids. So, um, programs like that, and we have a, the sky's the limit in a sense for where we really want to go with all of this, but, um, we'll, we'll, I'm going to tone it down a little bit, so, we'll go on. Okay, so what has, what has been done? So, um, the Pender County Task Force, Liz has done a fantastic job of getting this started and up off the ground. It took a lot of work, but we, it was first created in July of this year, our first actual meeting was in September. We do meet, if anybody's interested, um, the fourth Tuesday of each month at ten o'clock in the morning. But this month it is tomorrow because of Thanksgiving, so we adjusted. Some other things, we actually have already got a lot of the people on our task force, um, which is really, really cool, trained on how to implement some of these, um, resiliency skills, if you will. So, we have a couple of different models, one is called CRIM, and that's the Community Resiliency Model. We have Reconnect for Resiliency, um, Youth Mental Health First Aid, and I know the school does some of this as well, uh, as far as the youth mental health first aid, and we have more. So, we're, we're planning on getting a lot of our, um, people on our task force trained, and we really just want to see this spread like wildfire, um, or at least that's my, that's our dream. Um, so the task force, we were also accepted into Emerging Issues Reconnect NC, Mental Health Well-being. This was something that spawned from COVID-19, right? Yes, so, um, and this is through NC State? Right, okay, um, the. The cohort, through this cohort, we have received individual training for strategic planning for our own resiliency task force, which is really amazing because it's just hard to come up with that stuff on your own, especially when you're building something from the ground up. So we've also had some professional development, and then visibility to our stakeholders, like you guys, to showcase like what we're doing and that we really want to create some action in our community. Also grants and more. All right, so what do we plan to do? So this, from our task force right now, like I said, the sky's the limit for us in a way, but provide education and training to targeted groups to build trauma awareness, coping methods, tools to reset our nervous system, and common language among citizens. So education and training essentially through the sectors. We want to, like I said, the schools and, you know, even, even correction facilities and just all, all sectors. Public awareness through film screening. So we are going to start hosting, once we get a little more groundwork done, we want to start hosting film screenings. So there's a movie called Resilience, The Science of Stress and the, I'm sorry, The Biology of Stress and the Science of Hope. It's a very moving movie, and that's kind of how this whole task force spawned in the first place. We held a film screening from our EYFP, which is our Empowering Youth and Families Program. And from that, we, we decided that a resiliency task force is something that we felt like we needed in the county. And then lastly, like I said, we kind of want to just become a resource hub. So we want to share resources and materials and coordinate technical assistance services. We plan to have subcommittees of this task force so they can focus specifically on like one hub focus on just education and one focus on public awareness. That way, we don't get too bogged down, but also I feel like there's, there can be a lot better rich conversations had if we break it up into subcommittees. So that's kind of there. So our intended impact's kind of like where we want to see, and you know, this is over time, you know, as far as data, data, you don't really see that until years down the road, but, and we want to see a decrease in incidence of ACES, ACES, suicide rates. We want to see a decrease in substance abuse rates, graduation rates, participation in enrichment programs like communities and schools, entry into higher education, because we know with higher education comes higher pay, increase in individuals seeking assistance, and then decrease in homelessness and increase in affordable, accessible, stable housing. All right, so in order for all children in Pender County to thrive, a concerted and collaborative effort must be made to address the incident of adverse childhood effects or experiences and ensure the delivery of resources and aid to its victims. So then I ask, what can you do about ACES? So we, like I said, we have this resiliency task force. We have a steering committee. We will have working groups. We kind of thought that maybe you guys could be a champion for us, just as far as advocating for the resiliency task force. If you know somebody that you think would be really good at, you know, giving us thought, that would be awesome. Just like send them our way and let us know. But, you know, a lot of things, we, we need, we need leaders to help us with some of the things that we're, we're planning to do. So that's kind of why we're here tonight. Also, for you all to be trauma-informed as well, so if you feel like you would like to attend a training or a film screening, that would be awesome. Advocate for more trainings at your, your organization. So for people at home, if you're watching, if you're listening, you know, whatever organization you work with, or whatever agency, if you feel like being trauma-informed is something that you would like to see, we, we can hook you up with that. And then, of course, if you feel the need or want to donate to us, that'd be great too. All right, so from some of the statistics that was read tonight, we, this is just a list of the references. I'm not sure if this is shared with the public, this PowerPoint, or anyways, these are the, these are the references here. They're not websites, but they're just places where we've gotten information. All right, so do we have any questions?
You want to come up for air?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Should have took this off. Was I talking too fast?
You know, we understood everything you said. You just, you had a lot to say. Yes, you did.
We've got, you know, we've got survey to see. One thing that was, the prayer thing, you know, kind of, kind of, you know, just makes you, you feel guilty even though we hadn't done anything, you just feel so bad when you hear that prayer, that somebody thinks like that. My mother's been a guardian ad litem, so, you know, you can't share names, but I know stories, you know, that have happened. But I like the fact that you're essentially trying to be a clearinghouse for people. I don't mean to minimize what you're doing, but, you know, what, a lot of people, they said, I got to go here, and I got to go there, or who do I go there? Or they start here first, and then they go here. You know, I think that's important for, you know, one-stop shop kind of, a free information. And we have some, so we have some different government entities involved, but, you know, you mentioned donating. So is the task force its own 501(c)(3) or how do you donate? And how does that work, so we can get that on record?
I can answer that. We're not quite there yet. We're very close. As a, a steering committee, it's been very difficult to create a governance model. You know, what are we? Are we a board? Are we a steering committee? What are we? But through that Institute for Emerging Issues Reconnect NC initiative, that program that we're a part of, we were able to get free sessions of strategic training with an expert, Chek Sherkow for Cooperative Extension. And through that, we've been able to get a governance model, we've been able to get a logic model, all that stuff. So that stuff is being worked out. We're currently trying to figure out who, who would be the fiscal agent. So trying to make sure all parts of the steering committee agree. It's not just one person's choice. So hopefully, we'll have that figured out before the end of the year, is my goal.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair. When you get it figured out, come back and present again so we can get that information out to the public and, and how they can best assist and help. A good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, entire task force, please.
Okay, the next item, I think Mr. Seitz is going to come up and introduce someone to us.
Good evening. I'm Mark Seitz, I'm the County Extension Director with North Carolina Cooperative Extension here in Pender County. I'll just say one thing, the only good thing about the mask wearing is it covers up my gray beard, so it doesn't make me look quite as old as maybe I am, but anyway. Tonight, I, I wanted to introduce a new extension agent that we have working in this area. Amy Mead just started with Extension in November in this position. She is currently based in Brunswick County and will be covering natural resources education programming for Brunswick, Pender, and New Hanover Counties. I'll let you talk, I'll let her talk a little more about the detail, but this is a position that currently is funded by Brunswick County and some grant funding or some, a big donation that a resident of Brunswick County gave to NC State University. And so a portion, a large portion of the funding is coming through interest off of a, a grant fund up at the NC State Agriculture Foundation, and then also by Brunswick County Government. And it's for three years at this point, and we're hoping to get some good program impacts out of Amy in the next three years, and we'll be looking to this board in Pender County to help cover some of that county-based cost in the future. But I'm going to let Amy take over and introduce herself and the work that she's planning on doing here in Pender County for us.
Good evening.
Hello.
I just want to say it's my pleasure to come and meet you all here tonight. I won't take up too much of your time. I'll just tell you a little bit about myself. I'm originally from South Florida. I have a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in biology. My background is in water quality chemistry and coastal ecology. I worked for many years in the Florida Everglades and Florida Bay, doing water quality research down there and wetland research. And I've also done work in coastal contingency planning for oil spill work. For the past seven years, I've been at the New Hanover County Cooperative Extension doing horticulture and stormwater education. And so one of, I'm delighted, absolutely delighted to be here in Pender County, too. One of the primary areas of responsibility that I'll be focusing on is stormwater education. And so you all know that stormwater is precipitation, rainfall in our case, that falls on impervious surfaces, flows over the land, picks up pollutants, and then goes directly into our waterways. It's untreated water. So one of my primary responsibilities is going to be teaching homeowners, landowners, farmers, HOAs, how to deal with that stormwater on their property, how to slow down, spread it out, and get it to infiltrate back down into our groundwater. So my, my job will be to bring the research-based information on effective stormwater control measures from NC State, and hopefully provide solutions for stormwater problems, help manage and improve our coastal water quality. So this is tough to breathe in. So the way that I'll be doing that is through workshops, classes, site visits, and also small and large-scale stormwater projects. So that might look like retrofits or restoration of existing stormwater control measures. It might be things that you might know, like rain gardens and rain barrels and turning your downspout, things like that. Might be larger projects like fire retention areas. I'll be helping people with erosion control, stream bank restoration, or shoreline restoration, and habitat restoration. You guys have a really diverse county here, agriculture and tourism, and now your coastal areas are growing, so I think there's a great need for this. I'm, I'm really excited to get started here. You guys have any questions for me?
Anyone have any questions? Welcome.
I'm glad to be here. I'm pleased if you know of any, anybody who needs this kind of education or projects in the area, please reach out to me. I'm glad to be a resource for you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Attorney, we're at the point of public comment. Do we have any sign-ups?
No sign-ups, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Melissa, do we have anyone send an email in or anything?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then. We'll move on to the consent agenda. If everyone's had a chance to take a look at it, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you, folks. Move on to approvals and resolutions. First item being approval to execute a lease agreement with, for Motorola Solutions. Sheriff or his representative.
Sir. Good evening. Sheriff Cutler couldn't be here this evening. He's at the Sheriff's Association meeting. So I'm here for him, Mike Collier, Sheriff's Office. We're here to ask for approval to go forward with a lease agreement with Motorola Solutions, asking to start with the lease purchase of the hundred and six thousand dollars, which is already budgeted line item in our budget. I've got Earl Moore with IT with me here, who could elaborate a little bit more on this agreement if you have any questions about it.
Chair. You all want to hear from Earl?
This, this was a budgeted item that was brought up before. I don't have any questions.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Now, you know, if Earl wouldn't have been here, then you'd have had about ten questions asked tonight.
Way to go, Earl.
All right, next item. Consideration of a contract with SCPI related to the request for qualifications for the due diligence assessment for Dupen Land Company. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'll recall, last month, the county entered into a contract to purchase four-hundred-and-ten acres from Dupen Land LLC off Sidbury Road. Part of the process of our due diligence examination is to determine the wetland areas of the property, as well as doing survey work, master plan design, road connectivity, all, all components of a master plan to determine the feasibility of building on the property. Three components. A reverse osmosis water plant, a proposed K-8 school similar to the one at Surf City, as well as a regional park, county regional park. We sent out an RFQ, again, qualification-based selection, because we anticipated the fee being over fifty thousand dollars, which, which it is. We did qualification-based selection. We reviewed the five submittals turned in. Very competent, qualified firms, engineering firms provided proposals. CEPI was selected as the most qualified in terms of the team they put together, as well as experience, working with Pender County on very similar projects. Following this determination, we entered into a negotiation regarding the fee. At that point in time, we discussed breaking this work up into two phases, essentially. What, what we were concerned about and conveyed to CEPI is we want their priority to be determining those factors that are contingent upon our purchase, meaning the amount of wetlands, boundary survey, the physical attributes of the land that make it a good site or not-so-good site regarding things we want to do out there.
And, and, but we're not paying for wetlands, even if it's determined a good site, correct?
Correct. What we did not want to do in terms of the, the full submittal was have them doing the wetland delineation, the boundary survey, which is, with four-hundred-and-ten acres is going to be pretty extensive, and then also be laying out a master plan for road connectivity, adjacent property connectivity, school site parks, laying all that out to a moot point, when ultimately, if it comes back and there's one-hundred-and-fifty acres of wetlands, we, we may have no deal. So.
Because we have to have three-hundred-and-fifty acres.
We, we have an out at three-hundred-and-fifty, and so does the, the seller. We're, we're protected. We're not paying for wetlands. We provide a charitable donation for the value of that, those, those wetlands to the, to the seller. So the way we've broken it out is just the wetlands delineation will be done now. It'll be mapped and provided to you. They've actually started on that work with the permission of the property owner, and they understand that whatever work and time they've incurred is at their own behest if, if the board says tonight we're not approving CEPI. But they wanted to go ahead and start because they feel like, given the backlog with, with the Corps of Engineers, that six months is going to be a very tight timeline to get something signed off on of, of this scale. So they've been working about a week and a half out there on that property. The recommendation is to approve Phase One of the contract with CEPI in the amount of a hundred-and-eight-thousand-dollar, a hundred-and-eight, two-hundred, a hundred-and-eight-thousand-dollar, two-hundred dollars. One oh eight, two hundred.
Say that again.
One oh eight, two hundred. For Phase One services, at a point in time where if and, if and when the board approves us to move forward with the purchase, we will bring back Phase Two of the services in the, in the RFQ for your consideration.
And that looks like a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of work.
Phase Two?
Yes.
I'm, I hope I can get it lower. We, we, when we, when I decided to split it up, I said, let's leave that, we'll negotiate that later, let's get this.
Yeah, but they provided an estimate.
They did.
And it's in regards to, to land planning, traffic analysis, water treatment, and architecture, all things that we should consider.
Those are all parts of the RFQ.
It has to be done for us to realize the full potential of the site.
Correct. It's, it's a, at least, that's amount not to exceed, but we're, we're going to negotiate with CEPI to try as much as we can to reduce that.
Because we're not obligated to go.
We're not.
We could go with somebody else.
We are.
So, so one question, Chair. What is the final deliverable in Phase One, and when can we expect for that to be presented to this board?
They said they have about four weeks of survey work. The deliverable is going to be a bound, a rough boundary survey. We've provided them with a boundary survey that the owners provided for, for us, but they're, they're going to do a full boundary survey to confirm it. In terms of the wetlands, the deliverable is going to be that boundary survey with actual layout of where the wetlands that they've flagged and identified exist. with actual layout of where the wetlands that they've flagged and identified exist. So, I don't know if you know about a delineation, but the surveyor goes out there and lays out...
Yeah, I got it.
And then the corps comes out and says, yeah, it looks good, map it. But we're going to skip that intermediate phase and just get it mapped, so you'll have a product to, to see.
Yeah, understood. Okay, sorry to interrupt.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Vote is unanimous. Thank you, folks. We're going to move on to Pender County Board of Health. I don't see anyone here. Social Services Board, do we need anything? Okay. All right, Wes, thank you. So, we'll move on to items from the county attorney.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. One, although from every board I've heard, certainly other nations here ran smoothly, but there almost certainly is going to be a recount, statewide recount for the Chief Justice. I just checked the update. It is now, Mr. Newby is up by 231 votes. Anything within 10,000 is an automatic recount, so there's no way that it's... Now, it doesn't have to be requested, but at 230 votes out of 5.3 million, I suspect... Yeah, so, anyway, that, that may be...
I would ask for it if I was in that position, too.
There'll be some additional work for our election staff and, and board on that, just, you know, if that comes up. But please, again, I want to just make it clear, absolutely nothing anybody's saying was, was wrong with that, or especially anything that was here. There were some other places where there were challenges, that wasn't what we dealt with. So, again, there's, I just, you know, sometimes things, they hear about something that happened. For instance, there was a challenge in the head of the county. They met today, I don't know what they did with it, but they were meeting today to address it. Had nothing to do with us. We hadn't, we had, we, we had none of that. So, just, again, if somebody says, oh, I heard it, no, it wasn't us.
I thought, I saw one of the best responses was from our Director of Elections. There was a, ask questions or whatever, says, well, why are you not, why, if somebody else has called a race, why haven't you? And their answer was correct, is Board of Elections don't call races.
Right.
All they do is give results. They don't call races. You know, the media calls races. And that's, there's nothing official about that, regardless of what the call is. It's not, Board of Elections give you the numbers, give you the facts. That's what they do.
And as opposed to some other states, we have people that are professionals that operate the county offices. For instance, the Brunswick County Director challenged her mother's ballot because her mother had voted absentee, but passed away before November 3rd. And in North Carolina, if you are not alive on November 3rd, even if you voted in advance, your ballot doesn't count. And she said, no, I, you know, I've got to throw my mother's ballot out. So, they are, you know, again, we, we, I'm not saying we do everything right, but that's one that we do. We have professionals. We don't have local people, or it's not elected like it is in some way, it's being, you know, in that way. We have a board, but we have professionals that are, are trained and are, you know, as neutral as people can be. It's their, it's their, it's their job, it's their career. So, anyway, that, that, that was there. Have some items for closed session, including one that we have not used a lot. Item 2, to prevent disclosure of information related to an honorary degree scholarship prize or similar award. Item 3, attorney-client. Item 6, personnel.
Mr. Manager, you got anything?
Next, next board meeting, I'll be bringing a resolution to, to waive the Mini Brooks Act for the Morton property. I don't know how, how familiar you are with Mini Brooks Act, but that is that, that is the, the state version of the federal act that says professional services have to be based on qualifications. That's why we do, for the services you just approved, RFQ. Under the state statutes, which is the Mini, Mini Brooks Act, you can exempt yourself if you anticipate that the fee will be less than $50,000. For the Morton property, if you'll recall, we have a contract to purchase that land up on 117. We will have to do a, a full wetlands delineation and, and an environmental assessment of that property, and it will not be $50,000.
That's a pretty straightforward track of land.
It is pretty straightforward. There is a, if you'll recall, a few, probably about a year and a half ago, we did a preliminary wetland on it, and I think there was four or five acres in the very back corner out of the way. Now, we have to go in there and have it formally flagged, have the corps sign off on it, and have an environmental assessment to make sure there's no fuel tanks, buried, you know, contaminants, industrial waste, those type things before we actually close on it. So, this is all part of the due diligence related to the, to the Morton property. So, we're going to waive Mini Brooks and put an RFP out asking for the same services, but also requiring the fee to be included in, in their proposal, so we'll know on Friday. The only other thing I, I have is Doug, Travis, and, and a few others, Josh with the GIS Division in IT have been meeting about property disposal. We've, if you'll recall, last month, there were two tracts that the county commissioners accepted a bid on, two lots in...
Morgan Cove.
In Morgan Cove. Through various tax foreclosures and different, different, other different means, the county's acquired, through no effort of their own, several tracts of land. And we're, we're just... We're just, we're, we're, we're just accumulating land for no purpose and no benefit that we're not trying to accumulate. So, what we're looking at is a systematic way of disposing of this land to, to the public who may be interested in it. So, we're, we're calling down that list of properties that don't, that, that are... We're removing the FEMA tracts because we can't sell those. We can lease them, but we can't sell them. We're trying to get to the core list of the properties that we can dispose, dispose of, and better, I guess, market those properties to get them back in, in the tax, tax listings and, and out of county ownership.
Still, I, I know what you're saying, but at the end of the day, it still has to come back through this board to be approved.
Absolutely. We're, we're just, we're just trying to determine a, a, a plan.
Just want to be sure.
No, we're, we're not, we're not disposing of property. We're, we're determining a plan to, to bring property to you so you can dispose of it, and we can market it.
Yeah, so we actually proposed this several years ago...
Yeah.
During a retreat, to try and get these unoccupied properties back into...
The tax base.
Into the, into the tax base, thank you. And so, no, I applaud this effort, and I totally support it.
And, and I totally support and applaud it also, but I just want to make sure that there's not a circumstance or, or a mechanism by which we could in any way be accused of, of fostering sweetheart deals. I, I want it to be an objective market, above-board, advertised. Everybody has an equal shot at this property.
Well, we, we would do it per the, the statutes of disposal of real property. Sealed, sealed proposals, any and everybody can submit. We open them at, at a designated time and provide the board all the bids provided and the, the highest bid wins. And then it's also...
The, the public notice issue is key here.
Yes, we would advertise, we are surplusing...
Online and in print.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's subject to upset bids.
It is subject to upset bid.
Is it 10 days?
Well, it depends on which way you do it.
No, sealed bid is not, that's right.
Right, if you do the sealed bid, that's not, but the board still accepts or not. It's not that we put it out the sealed bid, and then Chair bid the dollar, and I bid a dollar and a penny, and you got to take a dollar and a penny. You can reject all of the sealed bids.
This isn't a public sale, a, a, a public auction.
It's not a, it's not a fire sale. We, we, what we would do, and I think what's been a hindrance in the past is the public is not known necessarily. They call Melissa, Melissa will tell them the general guidelines, but we've gotten crazy bids on property before that was well below the tax value. I, I think if we go ahead and set the guidelines that county's not going to set, accept anything less than tax value, then we'll have a lot, a lot better means of getting rid of the property and bringing you reasonable amounts.
We won't be spending time, you guys will be spending time bringing us stuff that, that's, that's never got a chance.
So, we'll, we'll have a policy in place.
What about the fees that may have been involved with acquiring those properties? You're talking about taking just the tax? Are you talking about adding those fees into the value?
I don't think so, but the tax value normally is going to exceed the accumulated taxes and the cost on that unless it's a very low-value property. Because then the taxes would be low, but the cost of going through the proceeding and the advertising and all that.
That's good. I, I, I think it's a good idea. I think it's something the board, Mr. Peatmire addressed, has asked for this way back. Speaking to that point, did you talk to the tax attorney today? Is he going to be? Okay, okay, just wanted to be sure.
I'm waiting for my tax to come down to go in closed session.
Okay. All right, so, that's...
I, I don't have stuff for closed session, if nothing else.
Okay, do either one of the assistant managers have anything?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to notify the board that, an update on the shooting range. So, we've hired 13 new employees. They went through training this past weekend.
Orientation today?
Orientation today, and we are set to reopen the shooting range on Wednesday.
Right, yeah.
Exactly eight months to the day.
Wow. So, we've got all new people?
Not all new people, but a large majority. So, I, I do ask the public to be patient. We've got a lot of new folks out there on staff. There will be some requirements and, and things that we're going to do for, you know, COVID safety and things of that nature, but we're opening back up on Wednesday.
How are we going to communicate that?
So, it's going out on a Facebook post tonight, probably as we speak. But we can notify in, you know, whatever way we need to, the post, the voice, and...
Presently.
You know, other methods.
As regionally used.
Yes, yeah, that's my point, is, is that we need to notify the whole region because...
A Facebook post to what on what?
My, the concern though is...
Facebook page.
I'm sorry. The Holly Shelter Shooting Range Facebook page, we would probably also share it to the Pender County page, share it to the Parks and Recreation Page. And then we would work with Tammy on it presently. So, I just got notified of this this afternoon from D that we're ready to go.
Good.
The other item we talked about the other day, we've come up Penderly...
That'll be for closed session.
That'll be for closed session, okay. All right. You have anything?
Yes, I told the board, and I just wanted to make note again that we have entered a, a resolution of agreement of interest, a letter of interest with Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer to explore the possibility of partnering for a waste pretreatment plant for Pender Commerce Park to accommodate industry. And Lower Cape Fear Water and Sewer would be the appropriate entity to both obtain financing and management of this.
Yeah, I read that the other day. We kind of maybe are thinking about talking to you about it.
We're going to explore, and the reason, and the reason that I feel strongly about that is this is a regional project. And with, you know, federal funding being as it is, we have to obtain funding for projects that have a regional impact, which more industry in Pender Commerce Park, certainly...
I was just giving you a hard time.
I know you always give me a hard time, and I'm tired of it.
No, you're not.
Thank you.
Well, I hope you're not.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate your work on that. I think it's a...
No, I, I, no, I, I, I didn't do it, but I do applaud Wilmington Business Development coming forward and, and making inquiry and bringing the parties together, or, or at least we're closer than we have been, so, thank you.
I'll relay that to, to them.
Okay, Friday I went to the, the RPO meeting in Wilmington and the Rural Repertation Committee. And again, to reemphasize that the county, the state is so run short of money now. The big thing is people are driving less, the tax money is way down, the collection money, so it affects every project in the state. And so, that's what, the biggest thing we're talking about, we got to really look at how much shortfall those states will have. We haven't, maybe not by the first or next year. But all the projects that we were concerned with is everything's going to be pushed back some, and so... It's one of those things that you face, that the, the shortage of money in the DOT. And also, I'd like to appreciate the election, Director of Elections. She did a really fantastic job this year, I think. So, that's a tough job, and I really think, appreciate what she did.
Thank you.
So, we have our November WMPO meeting this Wednesday. So, and our first meeting in December, I hope to have some good news about several things that are important to the county that I should be able to inform this board about. So, keep our fingers crossed that, that it goes the way that I think it's going to go, so... That's all I have.
Congratulations to both of you on, on getting reelected. I don't do that, I don't have anything else to bring up right now. Said, man, that was a, that was a, that was a moving prayer that she read to us earlier. I'll tell you that. You think you got problems until you realize, you hear about somebody's got a real problem sometimes, you know? I'm just thankful and grateful.
Let's see, our utility director is fashioning a different kind of boot these days. All right, we'll entertain a motion for closed session.
What do I do, is that like dance-related or motorcycle-related?
I have no idea, I didn't ask.
Work-related.
That's how we work out.
We don't care, I just kidding.
Before we go into closed session, can, I mean, can we take a break?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we go into closed session for disclosure of information on scholarship, which is number two, which I believe that's the first to be reading that one. My attorney alluded to earlier. Number three, attorney-client, every meeting. Number six, personnel, unfortunately almost every meeting. With stipulation that we take a, a quick environmental break.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, go into closed session, all those in favor. We are in closed session. Thank you, folks. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Go into closed session. All those in favor. We are in closed session. Thank you, folks.
I'm here to our second portion of the meeting tonight. We're going to kick things off with Travis. This should take just a few minutes, I think. Travis, right? You're going to give us the quick legal version of this, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
EFS Properties applicant and owner is requesting a general use rezoning for 55.72 acres from RA Conditional District One to RA Rural Agriculture zoning district. These parcels are in total five parcels, about halfway between Shaw Highway and Los Arches Curve on 210 on the northern side. These properties were conditionally re- yes.
What is the primary difference between the two designations?
I'm sorry, say again?
What are the two, what is the primary differences between the two designations and why is it important?
So these parcels were conditionally rezoned in 2013. It was the first conditional rezoning Pender County ever did to allow for a sand mine and only a sand mine. And so the sand mine never happened and in order for the owners of this property or any future owners of the property to do anything other than a sand mine, they have to bring this forward and rezone it back to regular old RA. Staff recommends approval, planning board unanimous, they recommend approval, consistency statement and all other information is in your packet. Mr. Keenan is representing the applicant and he is here as well. And if you have any questions, feel free to fire away.
This, yeah, it's like a no brainer for me.
Motion approved.
Is there anyone here signed up to speak to this?
Oh, Mr. Keenan, he's, I believe he's the, especially with all the judges in the audience, he knows enough not to talk out of them.
Robert, good job.
Unless any of y'all have any questions, I'd just ask for you to vote on the motion and move forward for the rezoning.
Well, it's already been unanimously approved by the planning board, right? And I don't see any comments in this. Is there any comment in this? I mean, we're just going back to what they were originally done to before.
It's consistent with all of our adopted plans.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion. So we'll close the bubble hearing and entertain a motion. We've already got a, we've got a motion and we have a second?
No, I have a motion and he has a second. That's true. That's the truth.
Okay. We'll let you have your way tonight. Okay?
I walk my way every night.
All right. We got a motion, a second. I'll lose it, babe. Vote is unanimous. Thank you, folks. We appreciate it. All right. Alan?
Yes, sir.
You want to, you want to take this one and lead us into it?
Yes, sir. I'll be glad to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I just called him, so he should be answering any second now.
Okay.
We're, we're going to go ahead and start in on item 14.2, consideration of JurisLink proposal for Pender County Court system. Mr. Van.
He's on.
Okay, Andrew. We, we've got you on speaker. If you'll just stand by if we need you, okay?
Yeah, dude.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. Tonight, we want to discuss the JurisLink product and ask for the board's consideration as to whether Pender County will enter into a five-year contract with the product and service. I'm facilitating bringing this before the board. Mainly, it's, it's driven by the fact that, obviously, with the courthouse restoration, we need to know, you know, exactly what the scope of work is, if this needs to be part of it, and obviously, time is of the essence with being able to move forward with that. We will consider the change order for the scope of work that needs to be done for the courthouse as far as the board's consideration in the second agenda, agenda item, once we have discussion with this, should the board approve this item. There's a few things that I do want to bring to your attention ahead of beginning the discussion. First of all, obviously, we have a lot of members of the court personnel in the audience with us, whether it be judges, is the clerk of court here? She had planned to come as well. Oh, okay. As well as, obviously, the DA's office and the sheriff's office, and we would like to ask all parties to be able to help explain benefits, efficiencies and so forth of the system, as well as, as if anyone has any suggestions that there may be shortcomings of the system that need to be brought to the board's attention for consideration. So we've also asked the CEO of JurisLink, which is Mr. Slade Trebuko, he's in the back of the room next to the window. He is here available for any questions that may need to be fielded. Second, I do want to mention there's been a lot of work behind the scenes related to the preparation of what would need to be done for the infrastructure of the courthouse for both the low voltage data cabling as well as any electrical needs. So there has been a lot done related to that. Next, the board is being asked to consider whether to utilize this product at one or both courtrooms, meaning the judicial annex as well as the courthouse courtroom. And finally, I want to mention to you before discussion begins, I want to mention to you that the original proposal submitted to you did have typographical error as far as the number of kiosks that were shown. It showed eleven. But actually, the number should be one in case something changes with the discussion this evening. In reference to that, and I think Judge Harrell actually has some further clarification about that as well. And so what I've done is I left before you a copy of that information. And I tried to help simplify for your review and determination the, the true costs of all of this combined for the five-year period. I broke it down in spreadsheet format to kind of help simplify. And Mr. Slade Tribuco with JurisLink verified that that is the number for the five-year period. I also want to mention that as far as that's concerned, this project could be covered under CARES Act funding. However, and I've asked Meg to be here tonight to assist with any questions we may have related to this. But it's my understanding that if that were to be the case, we would need to go ahead and bill for the full five years or settle for that bill within, for the full five years within this current budget year before the end of the budget year in order to do so. So that's basically the background information that I wanted to give you. Now I'd like for us to have discussion from all parties that are concerned, if we may.
Okay, I think Commissioner Pete Meyer had a comment he wanted to make.
So I, I've been supporting this a long time. I've been talking about this for a long, long time. Not only in the courtroom and, but also virtual magistrates and all kinds of application of technology in this realm. And I, I think this is a no-brainer. A couple of questions that do concern me. I mean, we've been out of our courthouse for over two years now. And of course, we are very, very anxious to get all you back into the courthouse so that we can start working that backlog down and getting back to some form of normalcy. So when I read through all this, you know, it says that this is good for sixty days, that, that it would be up and running within sixty days of us signing this contingent upon the hardware being installed, you know, the wiring and that such. So A, when, how much of an effort is that and when would that be done? The prerequisite, if you will, of the wiring, when would that be done? And how much is that going to cost? And what is the negative impact to the overall schedule of getting us back in the courthouse? Those, can we address those right to start with?
Yes, sir. So the, to answer your question in reference to the cost, that would be the next agenda item to consider that the change order for, you do mean for the courthouse itself?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
But, but just in terms of the wiring, I'm not so much concerned. I've read all the rest of the numbers. What I'm worried about is that prerequisite, that sixty days. I, I want to know, understand what, what we think is reality around that cost of getting that infrastructure in place, the hardwiring that is needed for internet and for electrical service so that this can go operational within sixty days of us signing. Or when that will actually be in place? What, what does that cost? And what's the impact to the overall getting us back into, is this going to have some negative impact on us getting back into the courthouse?
No, sir. At this juncture, I do not see this process affecting us in, in terms of being a critical path item for getting the courthouse open, although it could be if we don't, obviously, if we don't go ahead and make the decision if, if we need to move forward. So potentially, it could become a critical path item, but at the moment, it is not the highest critical path item as far as, so, so what I'm getting at is with the other critical path item, which we had planned to bring to the board in the December meeting to ask for a time extension to Thomas's contract. And at the moment, and I have Andrew, the project manager, he's on the conference call with us if we have any questions for Thomas. But we are presently, we're tracking for final completion to be the end of February should the board approve that time extension.
Yeah, so and I, and I appreciate that answer. So let me try this one more time.
Okay.
What I don't, what I don't want, I, I, I don't see this infrastructure as costing more than, you know, a few thousand dollars to put in place. And maybe I'm totally amiss here. What, what do we?
Forty-two thousand is the next.
For the infrastructure?
Yes, sir.
For the infrastructure to accommodate the.
Just for the courthouse, not for the annex?
Just for the courthouse. I will say that fifty-six hundred of that forty-two thousand is for wireless access points to be throughout the building. So, so, so that is the, what is that, the thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand, that would be the total cost for the JurisLink aspect. But the work has to take place simultaneously as far as the wireless access points and the JurisLink piece because it's all the same type of work.
So if we make this decision tonight, are we going to get the infrastructure in place? I don't want it to be the holdup of us getting back in that courthouse. I don't want us to make it. Do you, do you see what I'm saying?
I do see what you're saying.
This forty-two thousand dollar change order has, Andrew confirmed this, zero days added to the contract. So this, this is not a, it is a critical path, but not in a critical path of the timeline of substantial of December twenty-nine. Is that right, Andrew?
As of right now, the JurisLink stipend board is not critical path affecting the end date.
I think you answered both of the questions.
Okay. So can we go ahead and?
Yes, sir.
We, we got some important folks here tonight.
We have very important folks here.
Judge Corpening, Judge Harrell and District Attorney Ben David. So we're pleased to have all of you. Thank you for coming. I don't know who wants to talk first?
I would tend to think unless Judge Harrell has been more so the liaison related to JurisLink. So I guess we'll start with Mr. or with Judge Harrell.
All right.
Thank you, members of the commission. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. And I want to give you some, I know Mr. Pete Meyer has expressed his concern about these issues, but I want to make sure everybody understands why it's important for us. COVID has put us in a, in a bind. You've heard a lot of stories and have seen some numbers, actually a few deaths out of Fender Correctional, the DAC facility because of prisoners coming in and out of that facility, bringing this virus back into a confined space where social distancing is simply not possible. We have the same concern at our county jail. We're trying to do everything we can to minimize traffic in and out of that facility. JurisLink will allow us to conduct first appearances by video transmission. We don't have to move anybody out of that jail. But JurisLink will also allow the attorneys to meet with their clients through a remote process. They can do it from their office. They can meet with them on the terminal in the jail. They schedule it through the software. So it's not a matter of having to tie up the phones with some jail staff to schedule those appointments. All of that is set up. The other thing that JurisLink does for us that our WebEx, which is what we use right now through the court system, WebEx has some pretty difficult limitations for us to work in. One of the biggest ones that we have is the inability to exchange documents. JurisLink will allow us to send when we're doing a first appearance, if somebody's going to waive their right to counsel, we can send that document to them through the JurisLink software. They can sign it digitally and it's printed out right on the spot in the clerk's office. If they're requesting court-appointed counsel, they have to fill out an affidavit of indigency. They can do it on the pad at the jail. It's immediately transmitted to the clerk. When the attorneys are trying to get their clients to review a plea transcript, that four-page document that we've done, I can't tell you how many thousands of times over the last eight months, they can submit that to their client during the conference and the client can review it and sign it. So all of that document piece that's so difficult for us to deal with through WebEx will now be able to do through JurisLink. Probably one of the biggest limitations that WebEx has for us is our bandwidth. We get into a hearing at the courthouse and we had this problem Friday. We could not communicate with the inmate who was sitting in the Pender County jail because the internet at the annex wasn't enough, the bandwidth was not sufficient to support the attorneys who were trying to take part in that conference. So you end up with a prosecutor having to sit right next to the defense lawyer on one computer that's hardwired into the AOC network. And I'm sitting, I have to go in the back with the court reporter right next to me, hardwired into an AOC hardwire. The attorneys then sitting, if you're a defendant, you're sitting in the jail looking at your advocate sitting right next to the prosecutor, it just doesn't create a whole lot of sense of trust that this guy's really fighting for me. We had audio issues. We couldn't get a clean signal. So those things have been difficult for us through WebEx. With JurisLink, we're going to have a dedicated line. That's not going to be a problem. And it allows that display to be in the courtroom so everybody can see what's going on. We're not individually having to use our own laptops to try to sign into a system. So it's a great opportunity for us. The other thing that JurisLink has is they have been able to go into a lot of the counties and install this system in counties where we house inmates. So instead of having to transport a defendant from Jacksonville back to Bergoff for what may be a ten-minute hearing, we can coordinate with that county, set up a time and conduct it through JurisLink and have the same ability to exchange documents without any of the staff from the Pender County Sheriff's Department having to get on the road, drive all the way to Jacksonville or drive all the way to E-Town or drive all the way down to Brunswick County. All of those counties have JurisLink. New Hanover County will have it in two weeks, I think. So we'll be able to do that with the New Hanover County jail as well. The biggest thing that we can do are first appearances. There's a hope that we'll be able to continue to do pleas in the future. Right now, this General Assembly is going to have to amend some statutes to allow us to do that after COVID. But we're hoping that'll take place. Because the fact that we can conduct all of this without anybody having to go in and out of that jail, without anybody having to get on the road and risk escape or injury, without anybody having to risk infection, it's a great opportunity. So that's one of the reasons we're hoping the CARES Act will cover this because it completely eliminates that risk of infection just for a court here. I will tell you that we had a late development from AOC late Friday. Judge Corpening can address this product perhaps during his statement. But it turns out that the AOC has been able to get some funding. They're going to provide us with a big screen and a camera and a microphone system that we can use over at the annex. So what I need, what we need as a court system is JurisLink in the old courthouse. We don't have to have it in both courtrooms. We can function with JurisLink in the old courthouse. So that cuts sixty-nine thousand dollars off of what we were asking for in this proposal. So I'll let Judge Corpening and Mr. David speak to any other issues from their perspective, from the district court perspective.
Maybe this question might be for either one of you. Eventually, would this be beneficial to our, to our jail annex over at the county annex?
Absolutely. This function, I've used it in Craven County quite a bit. Their jail is outside of town. They've got a remote jail facility. We do all of our first appearances through JurisLink.
Good.
So you don't have to get on the road and drive them anywhere.
I call it our Otis T. Campbell annex.
Well, we lose a deputy for, you know, four to six hours.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
You know?
Or the towns use it.
So even when we get a new, I say when, not if, even when we get the new jail and sheriff's office complex, we'll be able to do first appearances for all of those inmates without having to put them in vehicles and drive them over to the courthouse. So all of that can be done through this JurisLink software. We do it every day in Wilmington with a dedicated system that they have now, but JurisLink is going to give us more opportunity for document exchange, which is something that's really beneficial to us.
And Judge Harrell, this, I, I, you may not be the right person, but from a firewall cybersecurity standpoint, this has certified security where it's not. So the privacy of all the documents that are exchanged will remain completely secure?
I'll let Mr. Tribuco address the security issues with his software package. But I'll tell you, one of the other benefits is it can be accessed remotely. So on those cases where I have a first appearance that involves a non-English speaking defendant, the interpreter can join in on a Chromebook from Wilmington and be able to translate for us without having to drive all the way up to Bergoff for that hearing, which is another problem that we have in district court where we're waiting for an interpreter who's trying to be in two places at once. So that process will allow us to make that scheduling a lot easier. But I, I think Mr. Tribuco can address the firewall issues.
Thank you.
Pleasure to be with you. I'm Jake Corpening. Thanks for this opportunity in so many ways, right? So, so first, let me tell you about the AOC development. Learned last week and really was able to confirm this morning that Pender County would be eligible for this. NCAOC was able to use CARES Act money to purchase one hundred sets of equipment that they intend to roll out, one set to each county. Part of the reason that I found out about it is because I had complained very loudly about not having technology when I was co-chair of the COVID nineteen task force that Chief Justice Beasley had, had, had started back in the spring very loudly, very publicly that we don't support, that can't be the answer, right? In times of COVID or any other time. So, so I confirmed this morning, Pender County will be on the list. They intend to roll it out to all one hundred counties in twenty-twenty-one. We're happy to wait for a little bit for that. Judge Gorman is also here. So I've talked to Judge Gorman and, and Judge Harrell and Ben David and Elizabeth Craver. We're all happy to wait and save Pender County that money, fully support JurisLink going into the main building. We're actually converting our dedicated system in New Hanover County for first appearances from the fiber optic link that we've operated since about two thousand and three in the KIBA annex down there to JurisLink. I think in three or four courtrooms, four courtrooms to enhance our capabilities between our jail and our courtrooms. So we're all fans of JurisLink. We believe it will be great for Pender County in the long term. But I was thrilled to find out that, that we could get some help with the annex.
Absolutely.
Thrilled. So I had a conversation with Chairman Brown earlier today and then tried to reach out to county manager as well. Because we recognize that it's, it's asking a lot, but, but we, we fully support JurisLink going in the main building and then using NCAOC equipment in the annex. And I'll be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
I, I think I made a mistake. I don't think I, I don't have my glasses on, so I didn't realize Judge Gorman was in the room. I'm sorry. I apologize. I did not see you. But nice to have you here tonight. We appreciate you coming along with the rest of them. Thank you so much.
She's hiding behind her mask.
Yeah, I, I. I'm sorry I didn't introduce you.
And, and I'll say that I've had the, the conversation with Mr. Tribuco about the security and his system is secure. In fact, he is now delivering that service in a number of our federal courts. And, and I'm satisfied the US government wouldn't weigh in without that security being addressed. So we're, we're satisfied with that.
While we have you here, I would like, you've mentioned first appearances. What other types of proceedings will this system help with?
So first appearances, remote guilty pleas, secure custody hearings for juveniles in the criminal context, calendar calls, arraignments from the jail for Superior Court, bond hearings. I'm doing one hundred percent of my work remotely right now in New Hanover. I'm hearing, and, and in Pender County, a lot of that's happening too with abuse of public dependency cases and much of our juvenile delinquent population is being done remotely. This will enhance our ability, both systems will enhance our ability to do not only fully remote hearings, but blended hearings as well where some are in court, some are not, which was a real struggle we had earlier in the pandemic and just had to give up on doing blended hearings. It just didn't work.
This will help us get up to speed and has helped us get up to speed during COVID or has helped somewhat. What's the likelihood that you'll be able to continue utilizing this technology as extensively as you are now once we're beyond the COVID? And I understand that there may have been some requirements of legislative changes to allow continued use. So my question is, are we putting in a system that's only going to be beneficial to us for a limited period of time?
No, in fact, New Hanover County has made the investment in JurisLink for over the long term into the future, even without legislative changes, to do the criminal. the future, even without legislative changes, to do the criminal work that we already do. And as you look at building a new jail down the road, you know, we did that in New Hanover several years ago, except it was up the road in New Hanover. And, you know, and we're moving, you know, in New Hanover, it's 30 to 50 inmates a day for first appearances. And we don't move them. We haven't been since 2003. We put them on the screen. And JurisLink is actually going to enhance our capabilities on that. We use it every day. And we will use it every day for first appearances here and then for anything else that we can do. One of the things we've learned, Commissioner Newton, is that as this has happened, people found a higher comfort level in doing things remotely. And so we'll be looking to expand. I was talking to Ben David on the way up here tonight. There are some things we're never going to go back to doing the way we used to do them, because we were doing them the way we did it, just because we'd always done it that way, right? Not because there was a good reason to do it. And this technology will help us with that, too.
I've always been a big proponent of this system. As an officer of the court, I see that they could help us greatly be more efficient and justice would not move so slow. But from a commissioner's standpoint and from a governmental standpoint, it will save us a great deal of money in man-hours transporting. It will greatly enhance the safety of our public safety officers, not putting them out on the road. And it would save us a lot of money in a lot of different ways. So I think it's money well spent, and I'm a very big supporter of the system.
And Judge Harold alluded to this, about the lawyers being able to talk to their clients in, you know, via the JurisLink with the kiosk in the jail. What we've seen in New Hanover is that has enhanced the communication between lawyers and clients and helped to move cases. One of the complaints that, you know, we used to have, lawyers wouldn't go see their clients in jail, whether it's New Hanover or Pender or whatever county. But with the JurisLink system, it has become so easy, just schedule an appointment and log on. And the inmate sits down in front of the kiosk and off they go.
Well, Judge Corpenning, it's been difficult for us, and I guess this would be better directed to District Attorney, but it's been difficult to find defense counsel for criminal cases when you have prisoners that are outsourced in different, various counties, because it takes so long for the attorney to go and meet with that client. So I don't know where we are with the prosecutor's office situation, but, you know, this may very well be a way we could enhance representation for indigent prisoners.
I have to believe it'll help. That definitely has been a frustration.
Can't hurt.
It'll help. I don't see a downside to this at all. It's a really positive step in so many ways.
And I'm thankful for AOC providing equipment and seeing the need for this. So that supports our position of support for your cause.
Commissioner McCall, you had a question, I think?
Yeah, I want to say something. Anytime we can, it really concerns me in the past about, it's always a security risk when you move a person from jail to the court. So I could see, especially, we have to go get them like in Onslow County or somewhere, putting our deputies on the road. So I can see, this really impresses me, the security, that it's going to help. So I know it's going to cost us some money, but it's like it would be well worth the money we're spending.
Any other questions for me?
Thank you.
All right. My pleasure.
Good. Mr., okay. Yeah. We'll give them a chance.
Mr. Chairman and honorable members of this commission, I'll be very brief, because I think everything that's been said by the honorable judges does not need repeating. I rise in strong support of JurisLink. I can tell you that the software we've had in place now for years in New Hanover County is one that obviously our court officials for this judicial district are very conversant with at this point. But just to underscore that who's not here tonight, defense attorneys are falling off of our appointed list. And many times, they say, it's not worth it financially to try and chase down defendants who might be housed in different places. JurisLink is going to give them the ability from the comfort of their own offices, whether that's here in Bergoff or in Wilmington, on a secure line to be able to convey these plea offers that my prosecutors are giving to them to move these cases. And we believe it's going to greatly enhance judicial efficiency, which obviously saves money. The benefits to safety are obvious, not just because of COVID, but because of physical transport of prisoners. When I became district attorney 16 years ago, and we had moved the jail to Blue Clay Road from downtown Wilmington, we started utilizing the technology that is still there for first appearances. It's been greatly expanded during this pandemic. And as Judge Corpenning said, we're never going back. Even though we're obviously at some point going to be beyond the need to have to socially distance and keep prisoners there just for the pandemic, the efficiencies that have been built in and the, just the ease that people are using this technology with now is something that we believe is the future for the courts. There will be some amendments to the laws that have to be made, but most of this is cultural, it's not legal. And we've long had a culture that appreciated this technology, we're just utilizing it a different way now. I want to thank you for your leadership in taking us through this last two years since Florence to get to the point where we're about to move into the most beautiful courthouse in North Carolina again. We're very excited about that. We're very excited that JurisLink is here in Pender County, that it's long been a resource for us, particularly with the defense bar in New Hanover. I'll say that I've had many murder trials and other trials where we've utilized recorded jail calls of defendants against them. That's not what this is. This is not recorded by detectives and the like who can then use this against these clients. This is encrypted technology that in the decade-plus that has been in New Hanover, we haven't used in a courtroom once against defendants. And we're not intending to, we can't, but we're not intending to, because we think the greater good of them being in touch with their attorneys and not even trying to invade that privilege is so important. So that's not going away after this pandemic either. I tell you, from the standpoint of just economically the right thing to do, the timing of the standpoint that we're saving $69,000 just with AOC jumping into this, and with everything I've seen, I know that this is the right thing by Pender County, and I just urge all of you to adopt this tonight. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. One of my prosecutors who works here full-time, Rosetta Royster, is here. We can have videos of glitchy technology that doesn't work as well as JurisLink that we'd be happy to put up on that screen and show you. But the bottom line is, this is the right thing, and I urge its adoption.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Judge Gorm, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay. All right. Sheriff's Department.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Sheriff Cutler couldn't be here. He sends his apologies. But we did want to let you know that we do echo as the judges and DA said about JurisLink. It will be a welcome asset for the court system. However, we do need to put one thing in front of you, staffing to run this. We do need, I'm going to ask Captain King to come up, because I want him to explain how this works in the jail, because we have to have somebody there to run the system. And we would need to, I'm glad they mentioned about saving money, because staffing is something that we're going to have to have some assistance with in the jail to help make this, make this work. I'm going to ask Captain King from the jail division to come up and explain how that works.
Good evening.
Hello.
I concur with everything the judges have said, the district attorney. This is well needed. I spent, I've been in law enforcement for 20 years, and most of my best time that I've served in law enforcement has been in the courtroom. I've worked with every single one of these judges here and the DA since I've been here. I say that to say that I know a lot about the courtroom and how that functions and how it works with the jail. This program is going to be an extremely asset to this county. We really need it. But to be the bearer of bad news, staffing is needed to do this. Right now, we have four jail officers that work day shift during this time where this system would be used. Those four officers, their primary job is supervision. This past summer, standards has changed, changed some things in the law to now says that jail officers can do other things, not just only supervision. So therefore, I'm going to need a person that's going to be in the jail, that can operate this system continuously. That way, we don't have people coming outside, because currently, right now, we have our bailiffs that have to come into the jail every time there's a court appearance. So now, we're protecting the court by moving all this over into the jails, so we don't have to move any of these inmates.
Do you need a law enforcement, or do you need an IT person? What do you need?
And that's what I was getting to, ma'am. The, I would prefer it be a sworn law enforcement officer, just for the sole purpose that court function has to be operated by the sheriff. That is a deputy sheriff. That deputy sheriff is a civil bailiff who holds all those court functions, knows all those operations. So I would like to have someone who is a sworn deputy sheriff to be in place in the jail that can operate this system, so we're not bringing anyone outside in to operate the system. Again, not just a sworn law enforcement officer, but it'd be nice to have someone who's duly sworn, also DOC, certified, so when they're not operating the JurisLink system, they're helping out in the jail. So I don't have anyone going in and out, in and out, to jail. This is someone who's stationed in the jail, operating the court function, and can also be used as your, for your jail.
Didn't Earl come from the sheriff's department? Don't you have an IT department over there?
The IT department was combined up into one section. Now, we just have assistance from the county.
So you don't have any?
You have IT personnel in the sheriff's office.
We have IT personnel to come over to the sheriff's office.
But aren't they, aren't some of them housed 40 hours a week over there? They fall under the IT.
They've been, they're not there now because of COVID. They're not working in-house. And we just lost the one person that was assigned there that resigned and left, so now we don't have anybody in there all the time now.
But you have funding for that position, right?
The IT department.
All right. Well, we have resources and personnel that can be moved around, right?
So with this, with JurisLink, do you see this just being, as you mentioned, just a day shift person is all you need? Are we not going, are we not going to utilize this on the off-hours also?
The magistrate.
I don't see this as just being a day shift function using JurisLink, right?
I don't know if that's, do they use that for the magistrates? I'm not sure. But we vote on JurisLink. And then we can resolve this person.
Yeah, that's, and that was something I was just.
We can resolve this in December, right?
Yeah. I mean, this is not anything we have to resolve tonight as far as the extra body is concerned.
No, sir. I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
And I appreciate that. We needed to know that. But I think what we need to do tonight is more or less vote on the JurisLink, and then we'll work those things out with you folks.
Yes, we want to make you aware of the staff.
And I appreciate that. I do appreciate that, that you're not, you know, that you're identifying a need for personnel. Is this a training issue? Is this something that, that we could actually address through training of current deputies that could be able to do this?
We've got a yes from the hall.
No. No, 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 no. I understand that. I'm just saying that.
Cross-training maybe for a couple of deputies or something. So you've got more than one. Yeah, yeah. But that's something we can talk about in the upcoming.
Yes, yes. But we, like I said, we wanted to make you aware of the staffing.
Yes, I understand that.
But an IT person.
We want some flexibility there, too. And I appreciate what Captain King, and I think I got that right, captain, is it captain?
Yes.
Yes. I appreciate what you said. I just want to make sure that I understand. I think that somebody has to be certified in order to operate that system.
And an IT person isn't capable of doing it because of the galvanities of being a sworn law enforcement officer.
Okay. We'll work all that out.
Thank you.
I think we've heard what we need to hear, unless there's something, another question by anyone? Let's go.
If we get, I've got a couple.
Oh, do you want to ask? Yeah, let's, the gentleman back there.
And I would also like to hear from Judge Gorm.
I already asked her. She, she said she didn't have, didn't want to.
Nothing? Okay.
Come on up.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Good evening. Thanks for having me.
Go ahead, state your name for the.
Slade Tribuco, CEO of JurisLink.
Okay. You had a question for him?
No.
Oh. I'm sorry.
Yeah. And I want to follow up on a question that Commissioner Peakminer was asking, just so clear. Is there going to be any problem with you getting JurisLink installed in the main courtroom? And now, I guess it doesn't in the annex, because I was wondering if that was going to be while we're still operating, because.
The annex, this is 2021.
Well, the annex is coming from AOC now, so that'll be different. But would you be able to get your people in to do whatever installation they're doing such that there's not a problem or delay in opening the courtroom in terms of working with our contractor? And obviously, they're on the phone, so.
I think Larry could work with Alan and get in before anything, before court was even open and have all the equipment in and make sure. We would send our install team down and meet with them there in New Hanover now. We would send them here next, basically, and basically get as much done as they would let us get done as soon as possible. So we would not have a delay.
So your team is, is making sure, verifying everything's hooked up correctly and you get it up and running. You're not doing really the installation. That's the contractor doing, pulling the wires, right?
We usually mount the TVs and install the wires and.
Okay.
Yeah, but I was, I attended a meeting back in September where you were meeting with the construction crew. Mr. Boney was there, and we were all there, and you were telling everybody where the lines were to be laid out and what the infrastructure and what you need mounted and.
Right.
What kind of support for the system that you needed. So they're well versed. And how far along is the contractor in getting what was discussed back in September?
Correct.
Done? When they were upfitting the courtroom and, and the woodwork and stuff? Mr. Van, I'm asking you the question.
Yes, that, that will be in process. In other words, it has.
What do you mean, will be a process? Have they done any of it?
As soon as the purchase order is approved, or, I mean, excuse me, the change order is approved.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Got you.
Any other questions?
I'm just, I'm just curious about the encryption method.
Oh, yes. So it's, it's end-to-end encryption for, we use a, it's webRTC based, so we, we cannot record, well, actually, for court, we can record. For attorney meetings, it's on a separate server. We cannot record. I was a defense lawyer for 10 years and came up with this instead of having to drive, so security is paramount for me. And so court will have the ability to record onsite and project a link out, but attorney meetings are encrypted and cannot be recorded or accessed outside.
The documentation's behind that same encryption?
The documentation is, and we do not store the documentation. So the documentation goes from the signature pad on our server when they sign it. It goes to the logged-in user's email account and emails them a PDF completely off of our server. So if somebody had access to our server at all, they're not, there's no data there to take.
Okay. I've got to ask this real quick before we wrap this up. I'm not sure who this question is going to go to. We've talked about the main courthouse, the annex, the jail.
Yes, sir.
Are we putting JurisLink just in the courthouse? How does, how do they use it in the jail?
So we'll have two kiosks in the jail typically, and one will be for an attorney visit, and then the other would be for court. Court, the kiosk itself is installed by us and maintained by us. We'll put an internet line in there that will maintain. And then, then everything is automated. So in the morning, it comes on by itself, and then when court's over, it goes off by itself.
May I ask a question, Mr. Chairman? The kiosk, you mentioned two kiosks, but in the proposal, we have, there's one.
Right. The attorney one is totally separate, outside of the scope of this particular contract. So the attorney is not included in this, but it is something that would go into the jail. It's a separate service, not included with the, with this.
This is my question. How much is all-in cost of what's being proposed and what we're about to vote on?
164,5 grand.
Minus.
Would be 95,700.
Minus the.
Minus the annex. So.
This is my question. How much is all-in cost of what's being proposed and what we're about to vote on?
164,500.
Minus.
Would be 95,700.
Minus the.
Minus the annex. So 95,700 for the hardware components of JurisLink, and then the change order for Thomas of 42, 42,000.
That's the second, that's the second.
That's the second.
42,118.
Now, in this, in this proposal, 14.2, consideration of JurisLink, we've got the hardware component of 95,700. What about the contract for service licensing?
So all of that is included, the courtroom itself is 58,000?
Right.
And then years two through five, software licensing fees are 4,500 each per year. And then the annual maintenance fees are 4,000 per year. Now, that includes, we can remote in instant service. We can remote into the kiosk. We can remote into the computers in the courtroom. If something breaks, we come and replace it. If the TV goes bad, we come and replace it. There's no other billing for our services or our time at that point. So if the courtroom goes down, we come and replace, replace whatever equipment is there.
Okay, so this licensing period, you said two to five years.
Well, we start billing for the annual, the software licensing and the annual maintenance after the first year. So your 58,000 includes your courtroom equipment plus your annual maintenance and licensing for the first year.
At what point do we own this equipment?
At what point?
And I only said that, I'm being facetious, because if somebody breaches the contract, then if you breach the contract, we end up owning the equipment. I saw that.
It's in the contract. I can't remember what it says.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, for us, if it's, for us, it's yours when we put the equipment in. And then we just maintain it for you.
All right. So theoretically, you put the equipment in. How long do we have to pay licensing fee? We don't necessarily have to contract for the service fee, but we will for the support, for the licensing component of the cost. How does that work?
So, I'm sorry if I'm not.
Are we contractually bound to continue paying a licensing fee for a period of time? And if so, what is that period?
For five years. The whole, the whole contract is for six months.
You confused me when you said two to five years.
Apologies, apologies.
Typically, it's done two to five, but we got a five-year plan here.
Sorry, nothing.
Yeah, so in the contract, it says retention of equipment. In the event of termination or expiration of this agreement, JurisLink retains ownership of the kiosk within the jail. Any data lines will remain in place. Pender County will retain any and all equipment located in the courtrooms.
And the kiosk is proprietary, so that's the only reason.
I'm sorry, say that again.
The kiosk is proprietary. We have special equipment in there that's ours. That's why we take those.
So the system is not very much use to us without the kiosks?
No, the other infrastructure, if you go with somebody else, you still got infrastructure.
You still would have the infrastructure in the courtroom. You just have to put some another kiosk in the jail.
So we could use other equipment, say the equipment, the system that y'all are currently using, the WebEx or whatever, if we set up a WebEx, if push comes to shove, in the jail, would that system play well with?
JurisLink will not communicate with WebEx.
With JurisLink in the courtroom?
Our system will not communicate directly with WebEx, no.
Okay, so if you pull the kiosk, that's exactly my point. If for someone for same reason, you maintain ownership of the kiosk that we, and the equipment that we paid for, then JurisLink system, for our purposes, is not?
What I was getting at, you still have all the infrastructure of all the wires and everything else that is in there, correct? There's still a lot of stuff that is.
Correct, microphones, yeah.
That makes it, that if you didn't have that, and you were going to put somebody else's system in. I mean, you got some.
Yeah, but it won't talk to JurisLink. That's the point.
But you're, but if we don't have JurisLink, then that means you're going to another system. But you've got some infrastructure as far as internal wiring that's in the buildings. You don't have to go redo all that kind of stuff.
Well, sure.
Yeah, and you still have computers and stuff. You could install something separate on those computers in the courtroom. So I see what you're saying. You can totally take that. It's just, and push comes to shove, you can have a kiosk. I don't care. That's just what our lawyer drafted.
Why don't you just go ahead and tell us that now, so we don't have this concern?
Well, it's just what our lawyer, that's what our lawyer recommended.
Who's your lawyer?
His name is Jim Ayers. I'll call him on the way.
All right, tell him to call us.
Tell him. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'd say if there's enough reason for us not to stick with JurisLink, we've got bigger problems in the court.
Absolutely.
So I mean, but that's not, that's not my worst concern.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
We're at that point. So we've got a motion to approve this item. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, vote is unanimous. Thank you, folks.
Chairman, if I may, I just want to express appreciation. And Judge Harrell kind of corralled people, and I know Judge Gorman was out of town in a trial and came back. I appreciate y'all making the time to come at night. It was, again, it helped. I know it seemed like it was completely okay, but you be, as we often say, if you hadn't been here, they'd have been asking Alan and I questions that we couldn't answer. So we very much appreciate you being here.
Yes, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, folks. Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, Alan. Go ahead.
So in lieu of the decision that the board has made, just like to ask for approval of the change order in the amount of 42,118 dollars to cover the expense of JurisLink.
Second.
If there are no questions, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous.
We kind of by default.
Yeah.
We're going to adjourn.
Alan, don't forget Andrew is still on the vote.
Okay, go ahead.
Andrew, did you hear it?
Yes, we will proceed accordingly.
Okay.
Mr. Boni, we thank you for coming, too.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll be talking to you tomorrow. Thank you. Okay, you too.
So we got a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
And a second. All those in favor, we're adjourned. Thank you.